Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Here.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thompson.
Hamilton.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Any additions, counsel, to this evening's agenda? Now, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the January 8th council meeting. Approval of January 12th, 2018 payroll, $126,418.89. Approval of the January 17th special payroll of $10,061.82. Approval of the December finance report, the library board minutes, beautification minutes. We have approval of the 2018 mobile home licenses. Approval of liquor licenses for Hy-Vee Meeting Room, Play, America Inn, and the Fairfield Arts Convention Center. We have approval of claims in the amount of $631,648, of which Carly Nelson is $79,666. And PKG Contracting, $336,287.77. Any questions regarding these consent agenda items?
I have a question about the mobile home licenses. Are they, are we doing the same ones we did last year? And if so, are we continuing to have the problem we were having at the one location on 16th Street?
I'm unsure of the problem.
Well, oh, the garbage and trash at the one end and illegal dumping that was going on with it, which was at the fault of the owners.
Right.
I think we've been okay for a couple of years on that one.
Okay.
We haven't had any complaints. They've been, they've been pretty good.
Okay.
No complaints on that.
No.
Denise had to leave early today. We were gonna get...
I think she had attached.
Did you? We do have an attachment list.
Oh, do we? I don't see it in my link, so, sorry.
There they are. Okay. So we have Donald Davis, there's 92 spaces. That's Leisure Living Estates. We have West Campus Village. Alexander Gillis, that is on North 8th Street. Robert Brown on Brookfield Road, which is Southview, 40 spaces. Terry Smith Hickory Knowles, 13 spaces. Again, Robert Brown, 25 spaces, which is Westview. Pleasant Plain Investments. It's Utopia Park. Now, which one is actually the one that Darren's referring to?
This one, this, I don't know.
No, that's not it.
It's one of those two, because he's the owner.
Brown is now the owner.
And then Green Acres.
So it looks like he has a list of Westview and Southview, so it must be Westview. It used to be Ranch Trail Corp., but it must be Westview.
Yeah, years ago.
Okay.
And then Green Acres, and was that on that list as well? Or is that operational anymore?
That's West.
That's the other one, that's West Campus. So he's changed the names of those two.
All right.
Okay. Okay, any other questions regarding the consent agenda items?
Move to approve.
Move by Hamilton to approve.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes, but I need to abstain from the January 12th minutes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, counsel, we'll move to our public forum. And tonight, we have three department reports, and we'll start with our Police Department annual report. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everybody should have received both electronically and the old-fashioned way. I usually do it the old-fashioned way, too. The handout, we compiled our 2017 crime stats. They are in front of you. I'm definitely available for any questions. I'll just quickly glance down. We closely look at our calls for service. As you can see, there's just above 10,000. We're glad to see it's kind of going down a little bit. We're still a little bit above average. The last number in there is the average. But from our all-time high, I highlighted the ones for the all-time high was in 2015. So, I mean, it's still quite busy. We're seeing that upwards trend, but at least we're down a little bit. We took kind of a close look at these numbers. I don't want to bore you with all the details, but the supervisors and I always look at, for the Police Department, what's up, what's down. And more importantly, when we're compiling these for you folks, we're looking at why those numbers are up and down. So it does help to kind of direct police activity for the next year. As you can see, we noted that, and I'll kind of go through that, but our investigations are up. I'll kind of come back to that. Our arrests were down a little bit. I mean, it's not ridiculous. We're down 10 from last year, from 560 down to 550. So very average on number of arrests, just above average since we started taking totals in 2009. One of the things the crew and I looked at was the warrants, because we saw a huge increase in warrants tried to identify. And those actually are a statistic that's kept in our computer as warrants not served. So these haven't been served as of today's date, that we pulled them off the computer. So, we saw a huge jump, so we did take time to ask the officers. Unfortunately, we're seeing a lot of folks traveling through Fairfield that commits crimes and then go somewhere else. So that's kind of why we've seen a huge increase in warrants still pending. If it's Fairfield folks that we know, obviously, it's easy to arrest them. If it's people that commit crimes here and then flee to a different state, sometimes it's difficult to locate them. So it's something we've talked about, maybe assigning an officer or two to warrants. And unfortunately, when they're out of state warrants, you just spend a lot of time calling other agencies and saying, "We have an active nationwide warrant for this subject. This is where we last knew he was staying." So it's not going to be real exciting work, but we kind of think, have identified it as something we're gonna look at next year. The other interesting number for us were, even though our arrests were down, our charges were way up. We took a look at it. It was what I assumed it was. We had, last year, we had more difficult investigations, more complicated investigations. And that kind of shown in that statistic. We arrested less people, but there were a lot more charges. So instead of just a minor charge, we might have four or five felonies that we charged one person with, and that's why that stat has gone way up. The good news is, is that's a lot more people that have been charged criminally, so we're closing out those cases. The other big area of concern that Mr. Hallie and I have been talking about last week with the media is our traffic accidents. They're still on the rise, and so we've talked to our officers about different projects. And we're now in the process of trying to identify where our accidents actually are, why they're still continuing to rise. And this Public Safety and Transportation Committee is working on a couple ideas we presented to them to change some ordinances. And so it's kind of a busy time, but it's because we want to, that's the one stat we definitely want to get down next year. And I've kind of challenged the crew to figure out ways to do more radar enforcement or stop signs, or take a look at where these accidents are happening.
Is there any seasonality to them, Chief, as far as the number of accidents? We didn't have very much snow and ice a year ago during our winter. We've had a little bit this year, but anything related to that?
Unfortunately, I'm not sure. We see a lot of accidents when it first starts snowing, and then I guess the folks remember how to drive in the Iowa winter, so they slow back down, and we see it taper off. It wasn't really winter-related. That is a good point, though. We did have an excellent winter last year. But we didn't, we saw a lot of accidents. Unfortunately, we also saw an uptick in accidents involving both pedestrian near misses and bicycle accidents that were reported to us. So, once again, just trying to get some directed traffic patrol out there. We're hoping to get that number down. I'll skip over traffic stops. It is down quite a bit. We did spend some time asking why. It didn't dawn on me when I first asked why, but the biggest issue we had, as you know, the last three years, we've been lucky enough not to hire anybody at the Police Department as an officer. This last year, after the three years, we hired five. The reason self-initiated activity is down is we spent most of our time training new officers. So a lot of our officers go out and do a lot of traffic. We're spending time with another officer, training them, and didn't have time to do as many traffic stops. So now that we have a crew all trained up, and once we get through six months of academy training for the next two newest officers, those numbers probably will go back up to the same totals as they've been in previous years. It's not a huge drop, like I said, about 500 traffic stops down. Breaking down the actual crimes, I'll kind of breeze through these so we can move on to the next thing, but assaults are down. We're kind of looking at domestics. It's not a huge rise, but they are up quite a bit to the highest we've had, and they're above average. And it's, it's just something that, we talked to our prosecutors and asked, is there a better way we can investigate domestic assault? The important thing is to go back in a day or two, get more information from the victim, make sure that victim is still safe, and photograph any injuries. Unfortunately, injuries are, show up quite a bit more. But it's something we've already been doing, so I can just see, you know, an increase in that type of activity to, hopefully, if we're going to have an increase in that crime we want to address and make sure we're taking care of the victim. Good news on sexual assaults. After our scare last year of 18 sexual assaults, it's back down to an average around 11, and it's actually one below a 10. Burglaries are up, but I'm not too worried, because they're only up by one. Fefts were up. As you can see, the vandalism, criminal mischief is up quite a bit. It's not towards the average, so I'm not too worried yet, but once again, it's something we're going to address, especially on night shift. Maybe some plainclothes officers sitting in neighborhoods where we have some criminal And the rest of it stayed about average. The controlled substances are down a little bit, and that's what we identified. They were working more serious assault, domestic-type stuff, and also gun charges, and didn't really have as much time to do self-initiated drug investigations. I think that's it. The gun charges are about the same, so we're still a little above average, but we're trying to work hard. Unfortunately, there's not really a lot of deterrent to handle that, that we've been able to identify, other than good investigations. So all in all, like usual, crime sums up, sums down a little bit. There's no huge concerns. We have identified that we are working more complicated investigations, but it was kind of the project we had addressed before, where we, if a major crime does come up, instead of having one officer work on it, still have two. We've been pulling out three or four officers to work that case. So it's led to more criminal charges, so it's working. That's the good news. Are there any specific questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking again at the number of warrants that were issued. Is that the statistic, the number of warrants that were issued in 2017?
Yes, sir.
Is there a different, is the statistic being measured differently this year than it has in previous years?
Our question was, no, sir, is the direct answer. Our question was, I even asked a question of the, by the Police Department supervisors, is it something with the younger crew that's afraid to make a decision that there's probable cause that exists? And it's a safer way of doing it if you run it through the magistrate and request a warrant, because the magistrate is looking over your paperwork and saying, yes, there is probable cause to issue a warrant. So it's kind of a checks and balance, but quite frankly, our officers don't have a lot of time to waste the court's time to run it through court. A lot of times, they know that there's probable cause. I was worried that that might be an issue, because of the young crew, but it definitely wasn't that. We looked at all our warrants. It's not officers just running through. It's, investigations are completed, and we cannot locate the people to make the arrest. They fled. We've seen more transient folks come into our community, stay for a short time, commit crimes, and once they start to get on our radar, they'll move on to the next. That's a trend nationwide. There's a lot of, we see more and more nationwide warrants. We've never seen those in the past, but it's, the criminals, you know, the small percentage we work with are real good about staying one step, and, and they quickly figure out if they commit a lot of crimes in Missouri or Illinois. And it's only statewide. If they come to Iowa, then they can start committing crimes again, and we see that trend. We have a lot of our people with several warrants in Florida, Illinois. And a lot of times, we'll talk to the county attorney's office and request a nationwide warrant, so if they're caught down there, they'll be coming back. But it's an uphill battle, because it's expensive. Our sheriff's office has to pay to bring him back for the courts, and it's a lot of looking at budgets and making sure we want to bring this person back for justice. Sometimes it's an easy decision if there's a victim involved. Sometimes it's a little more difficult, such as a drug case, where it's just a state of Iowa. So there's, there's actually, we spent about three days looking at this factor, because it jumped so much. The only thing we've identified is a lot of transient criminals now.
And that, that difference is significant from this year compared to previous years?
Yes.
Last year and the years before?
I can't understand why we've seen an increase in, and keep in mind, I just deal with criminal stats. There's a lot of good people that travel to our state, but we've seen an influx in criminals traveling around. Iowa's pretty good at working, but working together. We communicate very well. We have intelligence meeting in our area and discuss some of the criminals, because they're traveling around so much now. But a huge uptick in, in the bad guys moving from one jurisdiction to another.
Any other questions for the chief? Well, Chief, I think one of the other big accomplishments, again, is the integration of five new officers, and we know how challenging that is on, on your staff and on those officers. So we appreciate the work you've done to get us to full force again.
Thank you, sir. I'll definitely pass it on.
Entertained a motion to accept the Police Department's annual report. It's moved. Moved by Gandy, second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? All right, thank you. Next will be Rebecca Johnson, our librarian. Rebecca.
Does anyone have a copy of the annual report?
Yes.
And the tech-driven services? I know. So, before I get into the mitty-bitty of the different funds and how they performed, I just want to talk about something that happened two years ago. All of the department heads met with Mike Harmon, and at that time, the Moody rating had gone down for the city. We were all asked to tighten our belts and find ways to economize so that we could improve the city's Moody rating. And what the library did, we looked at the fact that our full-time tech support person had decided to resign because he wanted to travel, and he said he could work with us as an outside contractor. And that brought, and we thought, well, that's a way that we can tighten our belts. And so we did that. And in the first year, by, actually, I had learned a few things about tech support myself, and, and so when a computer would fizzle, I would be the one on the phone with Dell, troubleshooting and figuring out what component needed to be replaced and so on. So I did quite a bit of, I stepped in quite a bit, and I did a lot of tech-related things that first year, and that continued the second year. Both of those years, we left 20,000 or more on the table at the end of the year to do our part as team players, to give back to the city. It was never intended to be a permanent change. It's not a sustainable change, because the library is a tech-driven service environment. So if you look at the handout that I gave you, what I tried to do here is to just itemize all the different ways that technology is used in this department. Now, we understand that in the coming year, the funds just aren't going to be there to add that full-time tech support position back, but I'm bringing this up because it's our greatest need, and we realize that in the coming year, we're going to need to work with an outside contractor again. But we want you, we're asking you to keep it in mind for the next year.
Thank you.
And as we turn to the general fund, you'll see that in this last year, we left about 22,000 on the table. Turning to Memorial Fund, about halfway down, you see where it says interest income from the endowment fund, and there's quite an increase. It jumped from 4,800 to 7,700, and that's because the interest rates on CDs increased. These are the old library endowments that were established back in the 1950s. Going down to dispersment, still on the memorial fund page, where you see library materials, you'll notice that we spent over 37,000 on books and so on. About two-thirds of that came from the library's foundation. Turning to the book sale fund, we have a nice balance remaining at the end of that year. We're in the process of making plans for National Library Week, which is mid-April, from the 8th to the 14th. You're going to be, all of you are going to be invited to an open house that week. And the book sale fund is the money that we use to launch programs and events, so it'll be funded by that. Capital fund, next page. You'll see a grant from the foundation at the top, and the amount is $6,039. Much of that was used to cover the cost of new sensory play equipment. We have a wonderful youth services program, and it was augmented by, storytimes were augmented by this new sensory play equipment. We also organized the local history collection this last year in the basement, and we purchased new Equipto shelves for basement storage to expand that area. And we bought quite a few folding tables for use in the meeting room. Turning the page to the endowment fund, this is not a fund that is being used real actively, but you see that at the top, we've had a gain in stocks. And these are stocks that were gifted to the library by the Martin family years ago. We've kept them as stocks, rather than converting them to CDs, because we get the higher interest rate on those. And the next page is cash reconciliation. At the bottom, there's a summary of what happened with the rental house. We ended with a balance of about 5,200, and we're building on that from month to month to accumulate enough funds to repaint the house and the garage. We'll also need to replace the ductwork in that house in the coming spring. Next page, collections. We practice steady-state collection development, which means that when we add new things, we weed out old things that are, have not been used for a prescribed amount of time. But you see, there's quite an increase. We've gone from 106-plus to 124-plus thousand. Most of that increase is in the consortium's new titles that are downloadable. So those are things that don't have to be insured.
You still have VC, VHS players?
Do we still have VHS? We do have one that people can check out, and there is one coupled with another machine from Fairfield Media Center.
Okay.
Where you can bring your old VHS tapes and convert them to DVD. And last but not least, circulation. You see quite a few things have increased, although overall, you're seeing a decline in circulation, from 189 to 179. That still puts us way toward the top in terms of circulation per capita statewide. But I really believe that once we reinstate a tech support role in the library, and we start having our technology workshops again, that brings a lot of people in who want to learn the latest thing, and then guess what? They borrow materials and use other library services, too. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Rebecca, you always provide an excellent report. We really appreciate the fact that we are still up at the top of the range for library usage. Building still looks very good and well-cared-for. We really appreciate your efforts.
Thanks, and it takes the team, and I let them know.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you.
Please do. Counsel, entertain a motion to accept the library report?
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, our Beautification Commission annual report.
I'm Paula Armstrong. I know some of you. I'm the incoming co-chair, and Karen has served for 10 years or more, so she's the outgoing co-chair. I just started in March, so I'm, you know, if I don't know everything, Karen's here to kind of help out.
You're welcome.
So the main thing that you probably noticed with the Beautification Commission is just Central Park and how we try to keep that looking good. We buy the planters every year. We try to maintain the nodes. We replace different plants that have either died or need to be filled in. And one of the ones I'm highlighting here is the tree in Central Park, in Heritage Park, that the, it was an ash that had died, and so we replaced it with a nice Japanese lilac, which Karen nurtured throughout the dry summer. The other thing that you may not notice until the banners go up is that we purchased new brackets all around the square. The old ones were getting, some of them were damaged or missing, and so we've really made an effort to go around and assess what's been there and what needs to be replaced. And we've purchased brackets that are upgraded, and after the weather gets a little nicer, the Arts and Convention Center will put new banners, so that all the new banners will be on new brackets all over downtown. Another thing I'm proud of is that we had a lot of volunteers this summer who took over a node, a garden node, so they helped to keep them looking good, because it's hard for the Parks Department to really maintain all of them. They seem to be able to maintain the central part of Central Park, but then we had volunteers that were going in and adopting a, adopt a node, and they did that all around the city. We have a new commission member, Joel Boatright, who wants to take on the nodes as a project. He's a former manager of the Walton Club, so I'm excited about that for next summer. He wants to really use his time as a retiree to really keep the downtown looking good. And I just heard that we have the Young Entrepreneurs, or a group that also wants to join in a project, and maybe it'll be the nodes, maybe it'll be a painting project next summer. So we keep getting volunteers that really want to join our, our team. On the bottom right, this fixture of a garbage can is another great project that Lou Bolster really single-handedly took on. He was responsible for refurbishing 17 garbage cans, which originally were complete ISORs and would have cost easily $1,200 if they were replaced new. But we were able to completely refurbish 17 units for the cost of what were, what would have been five new units. So take a look, notice these really nice garbage can liners and, and the outsides, and everything was done locally. So that was, that was quite an accomplishment for Lou. And then on the second page, outside of Chautauqua Park, we installed that nice sign that And then on the second page, outside of Chautauqua Park, we installed that nice sign that holds all the service organization plaques and planted a new garden node there. And Melanie Hirschberg.
Partnership.
Oh, in partnership with Rotary, we did that. Okay, good. And then Melanie Hirschberg is a new member of the commission, and she pretty much single-handedly painted the dog park shelter in OB Nelson Park. And she's part of Green Building Supply, so next year, they're going to donate paint for a project. So that's a nice thing for us. And then as far as the Rose Awards went, we had a little bit fewer probably given this year, just because it got to be so dry that not everyone could really keep up their property, but we gave the Rose Award to five businesses and five homeowners. And then down below is our proposed budget for the next, this coming year. One of the projects we hope to accomplish is having a similar service sign on the west entrance. So right now, all the organizations are just kind of stuck in the ground, but we'd like to buy a new sign that will have them all, just like the one at the east entrance. And anything else?
Yeah, and the sign on the west side, we're going to apply grants toward it in our bracket 1819. We have a little bit of money put aside because, as you probably all know, costs go up, but the commission will try to accomplish that.
Yeah.
If not this year, but next spring.
We're hoping to get grants from three different entities, and Joanne Reader is a new member of the commission, and she's going to take on the grants project, so that'll be a nice addition.
Very good. Counsel, any questions?
One comment, and this happened with our parking rec board, where in practice and our city code didn't quite match up, and there's a couple, one little thing in the bylaws that doesn't match the city code referring to the beautification commission, a number of commissioners. Code says nine, the bylaws say 10. So, and also, just ensuring that when commissioners want to talk to downtown owners about what can and go and cannot be planted in the public nodes, that really should be a council action that then they would be informing them about rather than acting on authority that the code doesn't grant. So I'm going to be working with the co-chairs and just get that kind of cleaned up so that the bylaws match the code. If they want an extra member, we can amend the code to add it, but just make sure everything is on the up and up. We just don't want any, anybody bringing that to our attention and catching us by surprise. So just going to bring the two together so they match.
Well, thank you for your report, though, and I'm always very impressed because you're a very active and engaged commission and also very self-sufficient. We do budget you money every year, but you spend it very wisely, very resourcefully, and again, you're a very committed group, so we really appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much. Does Counsel entertain a motion to approve the beautification commission annual report?
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you very much. Next, Counsel, we'll move to our resolutions, action items, and ordinances. And the first is the release of retainage funds, and I see Steve Hauser here from French Renner. Chris, Steve, you could tell us what this project is attached to?
Yeah, this is regards to the, we called it the Step 1.5 Sewer Replacement Project, also known as, I refer to it as, the golf course section. It was constructed by Langman Construction last summer. They did the seeding for the project last spring, but as you know, we didn't have the best weather for grass to grow. They did come back in the first week of December and did some, what they call winter seeding in the bare spots, but of course, that hasn't done anything yet. Let's hope that that would help it this spring to come back, come in sooner. The only work remaining on this project is to get the grass to grow, which had been paid for already, and possibly removal of silt fence. So the contractor is asking, asking for a partial release of retainage. Currently, you're holding $52,489.96. He's requesting all but $10,000 of that to be released to him. He has met the, there's an Iowa code section that allows for partial release of retainage, and he has met the requirements for that. So we have prepared a pay estimate, releasing all the retainage except for $10,000. So the amount to be paid on that pay estimate is just retainage.
Okay. Steve, a question then, if that winter planting doesn't take, do they come back and do it again?
He is still responsible to finish it and make, I think the spec is worded, has to be growing as well as all the grass around it, the surrounding areas. It never got near that last, last year, unfortunately. If he does not, that's why you're still holding $10,000, so that last resort, you would still have the funds to hire somebody else to finish it up.
There is a question.
With the sewer pipeline going through the fairways, and if, if the country club's not happy with the smoothness of that, is that something that the contractor's supposed to take care of, or is that something that's taken care of at a later date, or just the finish, I guess the finish grade of what is done on that golf course?
The country club is a little bit different in that there was an agreement sometime last summer after construction between the contractor and the golf course, that at that time, the golf course was satisfied. I don't know if Melanie wants to elaborate anymore than what's happening on the golf course.
I don't think there's really anything else. The way the specs were written for the contract, for the contractor, was they were held to normal standards of construction as far as smoothness and settlement, so that their requirements, Langman's requirements for settlement on the golf course was the same as they were for the property on the other side of D Street. The, any, I'll say, additional landscaping or settlement issues beyond that is part of the easement agreement between the city and the country club. So concerning the golf course's latest concerns of the condition, that is not Langman's responsibility.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification, Melanie. Appreciate that.
Okay, so any remaining work I spoke of is outside the golf course.
Right. Okay. Okay, Counsel, then entertain a motion to approve the partial release of funds to Langman Construction.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you, Steve. Next, Counsel, we will be setting a public hearing. This will be for rezoning, 800 North 12th Street from A1 Agricultural to R2 General Residential, so we will set that date for February 12th, our next meeting. Entertain a motion to approve the public hearing.
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, Counsel, we have a resolution to remove a no-parking signage on the north side of the 600 block of West Carpenter. Does Public Safety speak to that?
Sure. So this was one of our agenda items on our last, last Monday's meeting for Public Safety and Transportation Committee. We had a gentleman, a local property owner, who requested a no-parking sign be removed in front of his property. The city always looks at a few items, you can see it there in the second whereas in the resolution. We want to make sure that fire trucks, emergency vehicles can still get through where there to be parking allowed on that area. Now, it is a dead-end street, leads to a garage for some properties. We had our city engineer weigh in about the width that would be remaining, and both the fire chief, police chief, and street superintendent agreed that there would be sufficient room were we to allow parking in this one small area of the street. So we're bringing that now to counsel to remove that no-parking sign and that, not even a block, I suppose. It's essentially in front of one property at the end of Carpenter that is a dead-end street. So I will make the motion.
Okay, motion to approve the resolution to remove the parking sign?
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you. Next, Counsel, we have a request for a resolution of support for workforce housing tax incentives for the housing project at New Chicago. We've seemed to be doing a lot of these recently. It's competitive application process for those tax credits, and again, what the city is doing is showing its support with a resolution. And the second action item we would take would be a letter of support of our local match, which again, is essentially our abatement program, not pledging anything beyond that. Josh, do you need to speak to this project at all? Okay?
There's questions.
Yeah. So I think we're familiar with, we had the developers here within the last couple of meetings. We know the project we're talking about. We have approved the rezoning request. Now, this is an application for the tax credits. So I'd entertain a motion then to approve the workforce tax credit program application and the resolution of support.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion, questions? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Counsel, your next action item then would be to approve a letter of support for local match for this project should it be approved.
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you. Next, Counsel, we have the third and final reading of our rezoning, and this is the project that we're discussing, again, from a, the development project we're discussing, and this will be B1 general business to planned unit development. We will open a public hearing on this at this time and ask if there's any public comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for approval for the third and final reading to rezone the project from B1 to a PUD.
Still moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now, Counsel, we'll move to our third and final reading, and this is another rezoning, and this is from M2 General Manufacturing to B1 Business District. This is a small strip of property contiguous to Taco John's. We'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any public comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for approval of the rezoning request for the third and final reading.
Still moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, our next action will be to have a second reading of the ordinance to trim the parking rec advisory board from seven members to five members. This will be the second reading. You have an option here, since this is kind of an internal discussion of sorts, to suspend the rules if you'd like and pass this, this evening through the third and final, or we can move from the second to the third. There's public hearings, so I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any, any comment. Okay? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Make a motion, move it from second to third.
Okay. Motion by Anderson to move from the second to the third reading.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Okay. Next, Counsel, we have the second reading of our amending the fireworks ordinance, reducing allowable days. As we discussed in the first reading of this ordinance, we are making a significant change in the allowable time, and we wanted to encourage feedback on that. So at this time, I will, well, actually, I'll ask council members what you've received before we actually open up the public hearing.
100% support of the amendment.
I've received, I think this has been addressed to more than me as a council member, a couple of emails and had the discussion or two, fully supporting this change in limitation on fireworks.
I had the same experience. I think I received two or three emails along those lines.
I had one call in support, one call against.
Right.
You know, it's...
Yeah, and I received the same feedback, supportive of the direction that we're taking. Okay? So at this time, we'll open up the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak to the, to the ordinance, the proposed amendment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to pass from the second to the third reading.
Still moved.
Moved by Gandy. Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Uh, yes.
Hallie?
Yes, not really.
Well, Martha, we're curious now.
I'm not pleased.
Okay. Well, we're with, anyway, we can, we can...
It's not the end yet.
We can discuss it in our third reading. Okay, did we get everyone?
Yes.
Okay. So we've moved it from the second to the third. We'll take that up again on February 12th. We'll move then to our committee reports, Public Safety and Transportation.
Yes, we met, we go tonight. We have many items on the agenda. We had to table the Sixth Street one-way proposal from the community school district because, once again, we had our meeting on the same night as their board meeting, so we're going to make sure that next time we have a meeting, we'll not be on a Monday night, so hopefully they can come. I think the proposal was to do similar to what they do at the high school and at Washington where there's temporary one-way during pickup and drop-off. Our city engineer, Melanie Carlson, said she would go and observe at the end of the day to see what the traffic patterns were, to have a little bit more knowledge about what a one-way, a temporary one-way would do to traffic patterns. Second item, we've already taken care of. The third item was something brought to us by our Public Works Superintendent, Darryl Bisgard. He said there are some local contractors who routinely borrow the city's barricades and sometimes rough them up and maybe don't bring them back in the same condition they borrowed them in, and so he had developed a form that would make it a rental policy, that there would be a security deposit put down so that, you know, make sure they come back in the same state they're taken in, but also a small fee for renting. And this is only for contractors, not for nonprofits, not for Kiwanis, nor Art Walker, you know, anybody else who's just using them for a nonprofit. This is for contractors only. And Darryl was even saying he would be generous enough to lend the contractor the forms they use to make them so that the contractor may make their own and never have to use the policy. So I know that's in the works and should be ready for our next council meeting. Right-of-way parking, it's a tricky one. So many citizens have been in the habit of pulling up on the curb and parking in the right-of-way, which is more or less between the sidewalk and the street, and they'll do it even in areas where there's a full curb and grass and no form of hard surface and no curb cut out.
Oh, yeah.
Also, we have several businesses who are using that area, and again, not putting a hard surface down, just leaving it mud and tracking that mud into city streets. So the idea is to come up with something, an allowable use, some sort of conditional use perhaps. So we talked about starting with simply not allowing it in B1 area, so, or not B1, sorry, R1. So general, single-family residents say you cannot park in the right-of-way in those areas. And then the question came, were a citizen to then seek a variance from the Board of Adjustment, could the Board of Adjustment allow them to basically not have to abide by any rules whatsoever? Or would they listen to reason and at least keep those... Or would they listen to reason and at least keep those vehicles away from intersections, for example, to keep the sightlines intact? So I had a conversation with our city attorney, John Morrissey, and he explained that the Board of Adjustment does take city officials' input into account. So if a citizen comes and says, I want a variance excluding me from this, this certain city code, they have to have good reason, they have to prove hardship. And then if the city says, well, we need them to at least have a certain setback from intersections or such, then the Board of Adjustment would take that into account. And so it wouldn't be a, there would be maybe a conditional variance. So in short, we can move on that with some certainty that individuals could not just go and, to the Board of Adjustment, get a variance and, and ignore the city code, that there would be an opportunity for a city official to speak on that and hopefully get a result that would enhance safety. Because a lot of times, the vehicles park so close to an intersection, they're blocking sightlines. You just can't see the oncoming traffic. So we'll pick that up at our next meeting.
Not on a Monday night.
Not on a Monday night, that's right. All right, the final item was the two-way traffic conversion downtown. So we looked at a few mockups that our city engineer had created. The one that seemed to make the most sense was on the three streets, not Burlington, but the other street, three streets around Central Park, converting them from three lanes to two. And that third lane would then become where the parking is, and where the parking is would then become part of Central Park. Perhaps a nice white sidewalk could be put around there. And the question came up, well, what is all this going to cost? And that's the question that needs to be answered before anything else can be done. And so the committee did not pick that particular plan, but just said, go ahead and start getting some numbers. So Melanie Carlson is tasked with getting some budget numbers for what it would cost to convert, not just the streets, changing some of the node directions to, so as not to take away parking. So it's a big project, but she will come back with perhaps the cost for the entire conversion and perhaps also cost of doing it in phases. So the other item that we were going to recommend, the barricade, is not ready yet, so there's no action.
Okay. All right, thank you for your report. Next, we'll move to our project reports. Melanie.
You guys have had plenty of reports tonight, so unless there are any specific questions, lots of projects upcoming, not a lot of work going on right now, but with the creation of this position, I, I will stay busy here this spring and summer with lots of construction projects in all of the departments, and I'll have more projects to report on in the future.
One question. The City Hall renovations that are mandated by our USDA grant?
Yes.
Still in, in there, the ball's in their court?
Yes.
And are we beholden to a timeline?
Three years.
Okay.
So we...
So it's okay that they're taking their time?
Right.
Okay.
USDA in Iowa had a new, a new engineer start six months ago, and so he has been focusing his time and getting himself up to speed on wastewater treatment plants, which we're happy because that means that ours continues to move forward. They put this, he had put this on the back burner, but has started working on it, and we did get some comments on the contract, and now it's just in the back and forth time. So I would expect it fairly soon that we would have a revised agreement based off of USDA.
Melanie, your construction project spreadsheet?
Yes, sir.
The street work that's, that's listed on there and scheduled out over the, you know, over our, our time period there, is, in light of the fact that we may have some additional dollars in the next budget year for that, once we get through Ways and Means Committee, and, you know, looking at how, when we might have access to some of those, is that reflected in, in these projects or things that we can add?
Yes, these are reflected with, assuming that there is additional dollars...
Okay, got it.
...in the streets department. Another reason why those, the overall dollars and this list of street projects is a little higher is we have the 227th paving out by DOT south of town, which is funded through RISE and Ustep with a small portion of that being city funds. And then there's also the Tyler, that should be Tyler.
Tyler.
Tyler Avenue Extension.
Right.
By Trafficx, which is paved with the...
Tip.
Yes, with the tip. So the, we are accounting for additional street dollars, but the number is large because of those special projects as well.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate it. Any other questions for Melanie? That will, Aaron, I know you had some items you wanted to mention, counsel.
Yeah, the last two weeks, Rebecca and I, with the help of the former city clerk, Joy Messer, have been working on a general fund budget with the reduction in the evaluations for the city. We've gone to all the general fund departments that are funded out of the general fund at this point, and we've trimmed some of their requests back to where we have a balanced budget at this point. So we're going to work with our water and sewer folks here in the next week or two, and we'll be made, meeting with Ways and Means, hopefully with a goal of bringing the budget to the council on the...
12th.
12th, I believe. Yes. And so that's been moving well. That's been a good process, that we've had a good working relationship with all of our department heads. They understand where we're coming from as far as dollars and cents, and, and of course, and we understand their, the constraints that they're having because of those dollars. So we're, we're working hard to make sure they get what they need, but yet stay within those funds. We're also, also did send out the RFP for the solar projects for the city. And then I'm currently working on an RFP for the...
Comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Comprehensive plan, thanks. So that's what I have.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Aaron. Appreciate it. Counsel, that is the end of our agenda. If any other business for the council, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Meeting adjourned.